Good evening and welcome to the February 7th Glendale City Council meeting. Roll call please.
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Devine. Here. What's next, please?
Black salute led by Councilmember Sananian, followed by the invocation delivered by Al Garcilazzo, senior chaplain at Glendale Advanced Medical Center. Please rise.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our nation. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
I invite you to bow your heads with me as I pray. Our gracious God, we are glad to be here tonight at the city council meeting, and I pray that you will continue to bless our mayor, our city council members, our city workers, and all the residents of Glendale. May we continue to be a shining light in the county of Los Angeles and also in the state of California. As we conduct our business tonight, I pray that you will guide us and that everything that we do and say will honor and glorify you. Now fill us with your spirit and grant us your peace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next, please.
Report of the clerk. The agenda for the February 7th, 2017, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed Friday, February 3rd, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next.
Under presentation and appointments, at 3:00 is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, February 14th, 2017.
Thank you, Ms. Spears.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for the 14th of February, we have no business agenda items in the afternoon. For the city council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM in the evening, we have a few consent items. Director of Community Services and Parks, award of contract for the Duke Magian Barn. Director of Community Services and Parks, Vertigo Workforce Development Board's request for approval to be in the Americas Job Center of California Adult and Dislocated Workers Career Services Provider for the Vertigo Workforce Development Area. We also have City Manager. This is a report on Measure H. Under action items, we have General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. This is continued delay in the imposition of the Phase II water conservation drought rate. Director of Finance will have a discussion on the pension rate stabilization program. That evening, also from the Director of Finance, we'll have the second quarter financial report. And lastly, Director of Human Resources, we have an item regarding the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the city of Glendale. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
3B would be mayor's commendations for City Hall students ambassadors, cycle 10.
Madam Mayor and council, it is with great honor that I introduce to you the most recent group of student City Hall ambassadors during these very politicized, hyper-politicized times when everyone seems to have an opinion on what is going on in our nation. It seems as though too few of those opinions are often rooted in knowledge of how our system of governance works, why it sometimes doesn't work, and most importantly, what we as citizens can do to make it work the way we want it to when it does not. We don't claim to have the solution here at Glendale City Hall, but one way we're contributing to it is by trying to engage our young future leaders early on when they are students, when they may not be interested in local government, when competing with all the other things out there for their attention. So we launched the Student City Hall Ambassador Program. When people come to City Hall for the first time, possibly for some of them, others who may be regulars, they will see these friendly, smiling faces who will usher them and direct them to the council chambers, instruct them on the rules of decorum and how to address the council and how to fill out public speaker cards. And standing behind me are the folks who just completed this program, the most recent class, which was started in 2011, and we try to have about three of them a year we cycle through. So with me today are Arin Eskandari from Herbert Hoover High School, Vivica Ann Rush from Herbert Hoover High School could not join us, Charles Park from Chisenova Valley High School, Kenneth Cortez from Glendale High School, Maureen Kasabian from Clark Magnet High School, Arghesti Karamyan from Options for Youth, Ronnie Markarian from Herbert Hoover High School, Haig Pachayan from Glendale High School, and Lena Petrosian from Clark Magnet High School. So these are the individuals we're thanking who just completed this program. And standing throughout the chamber and downstairs in the lobby is a current class of student City Hall ambassadors. So please join me in congratulating them on a job well done.[324.38][324.38](APPLAUSE).
Well, congratulations to all of you, and thank you so much for what you do. It's such a pleasure to walk into the chambers, never knowing what's going to be hiding in here, and having your smiling faces greet us. So I thank you and commend you for your service and this volunteerism. I hope you learned a lot in this experience, and I hope it has perhaps inspired a seed in you to maybe become involved in civil service, civic service, and perhaps even maybe one day to sit up here like we do. Correct? Yeah. I'd like to read the commendation. We each have a few of them. We won't read your names because they've already been read, but we thank you all. The commendation will read, "In recognition of your participation in the City Hall Student Ambassador Program, I commend your dedication to helping the public during our city council meetings. Your guidance has benefited residents throughout the community. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I wish you continued success on all of your future endeavors." Thank you.[403.22][403.22](APPLAUSE).
And Madam Mayor and council, while you bring down those proclamations or commendations, rather, for anyone viewing at home who may have a young student in their family who they'd like to see complete this program or participate in it, we urge them to contact the city clerk's office at 818-548-4000, 818-548-4000, or they can go to the city's website, to the city clerk's website, to get more information.
Congratulations. Congratulations for your work. Thanks, sir.
He missed one. Did that gentleman get one?
Yes, he's the new one. He's one of the new ones.
Oh. Did you get your proclamation?
Is it Aghesti? Oh.
What happened?[450.13][450.13](APPLAUSE).
Second time to try, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next on the agenda is the consent items following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. On 4B, I would like to note that there is a revised motion.
Thank you.
4B?
What's the revision?
It's just removing one of the consultants that was on the list that the city no longer has a contractual relationship with them, AECOM, so that's the change.
Can we take a second and read that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes. Would you please read 4B into the minutes?
4B is Director of Public Works Regarding Geotechnical Soils Engineering and Materials Testing Report Review on Call Services. E1 is a motion authorizing City Manager to execute amendments to the AMEC Foster Wheeler Environment and Infrastructure, Inc., Converse Consultants Group, Delta Consultants, Inc., and AECOM for three additional years.
Councilmember Sananian.
Yep. So this is extending an existing contract by three years, standby contract, kind of an on-call contract. And the question is, how long has this contract been in place?
Councilmember Sananian, your council approved the contract starting September of 2013. So typically, we like to have these on-call services for a period of five to six years.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull 4F and 4H, please, and I'll move the rest.
So why don't we have, why don't we grant those contracts for a period of five to six
4F and 4B as well.
years? I'm sorry, why don't we just grant the contract at the get-go for a five to six year period?
4B as well.
4F, 4H, and 4B, with the exception of those, is there a motion to remove the remainder
Your council approved the contract. We are requesting additional appropriation for the upcoming projects.
of the council?
We have a motion.
But I think the correct response in terms of three versus six, to the extent for professional
I made a motion.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
services, if three years is a nice number, if we like the contractors, we keep them for that period of time. We would come back to you for an extension. If for some reason we were dissatisfied with these particular grouping of contractors or consultants, then we would cut the bait and go out and cast a new line. At this point, Mr. Galani really can speak to the success and satisfaction that we've had with this grouping of consultants, but to the extent that we've been happy, in fact, we were willing to recommend all four be extended, AECOM dropped out, but we're still pleased enough, satisfied enough with the top three to continue on with them for that next two to three years. I guess this would be a three-year, but that's generally the idea. We would stay with a relatively short term and leave it to council discretion to allow us to extend for another three years unless you decided not to, in which case we would redo the RFP process. But at this point, our recommendation is to move forward with these three firms.
Okay. So the reason I ask is obvious, because it's good to have RFPs once in a while to get the competition going between these companies to provide a best service for the least amount of money. But I understand the reasoning, so I want to hear how well they've performed and how happy you've been with them, that you want to continue it for another, since it's almost four years, you want to continue it for another three years.
Yes, Councilmember Sananian, we've been, like Mr. Ochoa mentioned, extremely happy with the first three consulting firms. AECOM was recently acquired by URS Corporation, a very large company, and when a project comes up, we issue as opposed to a direct RFP, but cost proposal, so we have competitive pricing, and we select one out of whoever responds, two, three, or four companies. And to be honest, AECOM has been very non-responsive. Ninety percent of the time, we requested for a fee proposal, they didn't respond, so we're just dropping them off. But the other three...
And they've been acquired.
Yes, and they've been acquired. Probably we are small fish for them, so the other three have been competitive in their pricing and responsive and performed the work satisfactorily.
So in a sense, we're approving a panel. It's a panel that every time there's a contract, you just go to them and ask for pricing and then...
Right, so we request pricing for at least two companies for each project.
For at least two companies. And if only one of them responds, what happens then?
Then that's the only company who has the resources at the time to perform the work. If we can delay the project, then we'll wait and reissue the request for fees.
But in any event, relying on a private vendor makes a little more sense to us than carrying the payroll for these sporadic types of contracts. So to the extent that we don't have to have an in-house engineer that would work in these particular disciplines, it's easier for us just to contract out, and it's more cost-effective.
Okay. So just to make sure that we're not, you know, this is a panel, so every time there's a contract, they still need to basically compete amongst themselves as to who's going to get it.
Effectively.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Would you please read 4F into the minutes, please?
4F is Director of Public Works Regarding Downtown Glendale Internally Illuminated Street Name Sign Replacement Project Phase One in Connection with specification number 3632. F1 is a motion awarding contract to Siemens Industry, Inc. in an amount of $344,250, approving a 10% reserve for contingencies in an amount of $34,425 and rejecting all other bids.
Thank you. Councilmember Garpetian.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So these are the street signs that we're trying to replace. Basically, this is to improve sign visibility, and this is internal material that we're replacing?
Yes, Councilmember Garpetian, we will be replacing the nameplate signs on the outside as well as the lighting on the inside to LED lights.
Okay. So this is more for downtown area right now, it's on like downtown specific plan area. I counted and there was like 23 intersections.
Yes, Councilmember Garpetian, we actually have a slide that we can show exactly where the locations are. This is Phase One of two-phase project.
That's where I was going to...
So it's concentrated on the core downtown business area, and Phase Two, effective next fiscal year, will take care of the rest of the downtown area.
Okay. So each intersection has four signs, right? Am I correct, or there are two?
Some intersections have four, some have two.
Because they're pretty expensive, like $3,800 each and...
Yes. A large portion of that cost is because of traffic control that they have to provide during the installation and replacement of these lights.
Okay. When you say the rest of the downtown, where, when would Glendale Avenue, when, is Glendale Avenue and Glenox part of the Phase Two or not?
Councilmember Garpetian, actually Glendale Avenue received new street name signs as part of the Glendale Avenue Rehabilitation Project two years ago, so they were recently installed.
Because some intersections, there are still, we have few of them that there, you can't even tell what the name of the street is.
If they're closer to the downtown area, they'll be replaced in the next fiscal year.
And the Phase Two is coming when, next fiscal year?
Yes, the budget that you have approved for that project will be effective in July. So we start the work and start putting the plans together in July, and hopefully within a few months, we'll install the new signs.
Okay.
I wanted to ask about, this does not include Phase Two, though, in this price, in this cost.
No, Madam Mayor.
Right. And will Louise be part of that? I noticed several times coming to City Hall that Louise is kind of gone, the street sign, and I don't know that it's on. I looked, and I didn't see it on this...
Madam Mayor, I don't believe Louise is part of Phase One, but it will be part of Phase Two.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. And it did seem kind of expensive, but then when we looked at, when I looked at the other bids, it was the lowest one, so...
Yes, Madam...
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion for this?
Yeah, I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. And would you please read 4H into the record?
4H is City Attorney Regarding Design Review Case Number PDR 1523221 at 126, 128, and 132 South Kenwood Street. H1 is a motion denying design review case.
So, yes, why is it we're denying the design review? Didn't we vote on this case a month ago, sir?
Councilmember Garpetian, the council made a motion directing our office to prepare the findings to deny the case, and so that's what this is, just denying, laying out the record of what the basis for the council's decision was, mainly pertaining to the environmental review, but also addressing some of the design concerns that the council had, specifically as it relates to the open space. So those are the two criteria that are addressed in the findings.
And how about the EIR and the historic portion of it?
Yeah, that's addressed.
As part of it as well?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And just so we're clear, there were a lot of issues that we raised in that discussion. Does this, does our action tonight preclude them from bringing back something different?
No.
Addressing those issues, hopefully they would address those issues regarding the historic preservation and the design and the open space and all those other things that we went through.
Correct. It may have to be new application because the council denied the application, but yeah, as long as it's within the umbrella of what the council decision was, they're free to make a new application.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move the item.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is City Council and Staff comments.
Comments? No? I just have one for, I think it's for Mr. Galani. I was at the Chevy Chase Library, Branch Library, for a fundraiser for the Library Foundation, and, which, by the way, was fantastic, and I think Mr. Landis can, you didn't bring your painting tonight, I would like to have seen that. But anyway, the lighting at the library is so terrible that I passed it like three times before I finally found it. Is there any way to get, I don't know if it would take brighter lights or new lights or, you know, I don't want, but it's very difficult to see that library at night.
So, Madam Mayor, you're referring to the outside?
Yes, exactly.
Exterior lighting?
Mm-hmm, yes.
We'll look into it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and that's all I have. And I have no cards, one card.
Madam Mayor, for the next portion, which is community event announcements, there were no cards submitted for that portion, however, per your directive, there are three cards submitted for the three-minute general public comment section. This is for people who wish to speak for three minutes, and forgo their five minutes.
Thank you. Great. Sir Roger Neelal?
This is pretty good timing, don't you think?
Okay.
Good evening, members of the city council. Madam Mayor, I am pleased to be coming before you today to, on behalf of Assemblymember Laura Friedman, who, as you know, was elected in November and took office in December in the 43rd district. I'm her new district director. I wanted to formally introduce myself to all of you. After taking office, the assembly member immediately started working on her legislative package, which she's working on now. I look forward to coming back to you in the future with details of what she's working on. Her focus right now is on sustainability. She is also on the transportation and entertainment committees. Both of these issues, of course, are very important to the city of Glendale, so I know that she's looking forward to working with all of you, as am I, on these important issues for our city. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sir Roger. Borna Vartanian? Followed by Bill Weisman.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of the council and staff. I'm actually here to make an announcement. Since I'm here to talk on another item, I thought I would just quickly take this opportunity to announce to the community that the, and I should probably note that I am president of the Rossmoine Mountain Homeowners Association, that the Rossmoine Mountain HOA will be holding a city council candidate forum on Thursday, March 16th, at the YWCA, beginning at 7:00 PM. Formal invitations to council candidates are still to go out, but we encourage the public to join us. We are fifth on a list of candidate forums this year. We encourage the public to attend all of them. Ours will be last but not least. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bill Weisman?
Good evening, Mayor Devine, city council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman from what is now very wet, far north Glendale. We're up in the clouds tonight. And if you're wondering why Sharon isn't here at the meeting tonight, she's actually over at the Glendale Unified School District Board meeting. One of the agenda items that the GUSD is going to be looking at is the Safe Zone Resolution, which has the intention of keeping our students safe and protected in our schools regardless of their immigration status. And I also was reading in the news press, since immigration is kind of an item that's been a lot in the news recently, that the city and the Glendale Police Department have issued a joint statement basically saying that the Glendale Police Department, like the Burbank Police Department and the LA Police Department, have enough to do with the, dealing with the crime in their various cities, that they don't need to be drafted as an enforcement arm of federal immigration policy. And the reason this is very important to me is that on, yesterday, February 6th, was a very important date in my life, as the 95th anniversary of the day my father set foot on Ellis Island. He disembarked from the SS Finland steamship of the Red Star Line. He was eight years old. He was accompanied by his parents, my grandparents. They spent several years traveling across war-torn Europe following World War I so that they could immigrate to the United States. And if they had not undertaken that journey, I would, I would not be here. And I just wanted to say that I'm proud to live in a city that appreciates the contributions of its immigrant population and its immigrant schoolchildren. I'm proud to be in a city that will protect and help those individuals, and if anyone in here is an immigrant or a child of immigrants or a grandchild of immigrants, thank you for your contributions in making this a great city and a great nation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I dare say that every one of us on this dais is a ancestor, or what, yeah, of an immigrant, every one of us.
Microphone. Microphone.
Two of us are actually immigrants. We're not children of immigrants or grandchildren of immigrants, so thank you. Mr. Weisman, where are you? Yep. So thank you. It's great to be an immigrant in this country.
I think we need to give a commendation next week, Mr. Weisman. That was, that was very nice. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Next item.
Next item, under adoption of ordinances, at 7:00, is an interim urgency ordinance to establish standards and ministerial process for approving accessory dwelling units, ADUs. This was introduced by Councilmember Najarian on January 31st, 2017.
Okay. Yes.
Minister Neelal? Yeah. So Ms. Stotler is going to go over the, what was introduced and then the potential changes we have pursuant to the discussion. We do have, we did provide you a deadline of the ordinance, which included changes pertaining to Councilmember Sananian's suggestion that the owner-occupant requirement be modified to be either owner-occupant lives on the site, or if not, then the whole property has to be rented out of one unit. We need to change a couple of additional spots in the ordinance to include that language as well. I missed a spot, but Ms. Stotler can go ahead and give the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Stotler?
Mayor Devine, council members and staff. My name is Laura Stotler. I'm principal planner with the Community Development Department. This is a follow-up on the presentation we did last week. So my presentation tonight is only focusing on where we have changes that were generated by comments that we received. The first comment we were listening to last week had to do with the proposed maximum size of the accessory dwelling unit. Staff proposed a maximum size of 500 square feet. That would be the same as our guest houses or accessory living quarters. During council discussion, there is a discussion of 600 to 800 square feet, so I just wanted to raise that. We did not make a change to the ordinance since we didn't really hear a consensus to make a change, but that is before you tonight. We also have comments that we heard on historic districts. Council did have a discussion about not having ADUs visible from the street in historic districts, so there was a change made in the ordinance to address that. There was a discussion of the Mills Act. It was noted at that time that the city does have contracts on Mills Act, so we did not make a change to the ordinance, but we do have control over that. We had a discussion of floor area ratios. Question was, what are the city's current floor area ratios in the R1, R1R, and ROS districts? In Glendale, we have three different floor area ratio districts. It's either .3, .4, or .45 for the first 10,000 square feet. Within our multifamily zones, we also start at .65 for floor area ratio districts. Question came up about what are our neighboring cities doing? We took a quick look at the ordinances, existing ordinances for Burbank and Pasadena. Both of them right now are studying ADU changes, so I just went with the existing code. We have R1 and R1H hillside there. FARs vary from .4 to .45, very similar to ours.
Madam Devine, Councilmembers and staff, my name is Laura Stotler, I'm Principal Planner with the Community Development Department. This is a follow-up on the presentation we did last week. So my presentation tonight is only focusing on where we have changes that were generated by comments that we received. The first comment we were listening to last week had to do with the proposed maximum size of the accessory dwelling unit. Staff proposed a maximum size of 500 square feet, that would be the same as our guest houses or accessory living quarters. During council discussion, there is a discussion of 600 to 800 square feet, so I just wanted to raise that. We did not make a change to the ordinance, since we didn't really hear a consensus to make a change, but that is before you tonight. We also have comments that we heard on historic districts. Council did have a discussion about not having ADUs visible from the street in historic districts, so there was a change made in the ordinance to address that. There was a discussion of the Mills Act. It was noted at that time that the City does have contracts on Mills Act, so we did not make a change to the ordinance, but we do have control over that. We had a discussion of floor area ratios. Question was, what are the city's current floor area ratios in the R1, R1R, and ROS districts? In Glendale, we have three different floor area ratio districts. It's either .3, .4, or .45 for the first 10,000 square feet. Within our multifamily zones, we also start at .65 for floor area ratio districts. Question came up about what are our neighboring cities doing? We took a quick look at the ordinances, existing ordinances for Burbank and Pasadena. Both of them, right now, are studying ADU changes, so I just went with the existing code. We have R1 and R1H hillside there. FARs vary from .4 to .45, very similar to ours. We also have in Pasadena for ADUs, a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet for the ADUs. And the floor area ratio districts that they use is .2, with an additional 1,700 square feet to determine their maximum floor area. With the interim ordinance, there's a question about parking. One of the questions that came up during our discussion last week was, well, do we have adequate parking? What are the requirements? One of the things that we realized is that we didn't deal with joint or shared driveways, especially on flag lots, where you might have a 15-foot-wide driveway that might be fine for two, one vehicle to park on, but you certainly couldn't put two on that and still have access. So we did add a section to the ordinance dealing with shared driveways. And we also did have a concern that was raised about covered parking, so what if somebody wants to build a carport? That's actually quite a larger issue in terms of changing the overall zoning code, because there are building code requirements that fall into that, under that category, and so we did not propose a change at this time, because we have not had the time to thoroughly study that, but we can certainly do that when we come in for a permanent ordinance. And then there was a discussion about owner-occupied units. Staff proposed that the owner, that owner of the property occupy either the primary residence or the ADU. A proposal was put forth that we allow a covenant agreement to allow for the rental of the entire property by somebody who is not the owner, as long as the entire property is rented at once, and those changes have been provided in the ordinance. And as Mr. Garcia noted, there may be a couple extra changes that we would need to make sure that we got that comment throughout the ordinance itself. And then we also had discussion about design review. One of the questions that came up with a criteria that we identified is, what happens if somebody wants to add a second floor? So we tightened it up to make it really clear that our intention is to allow there to be expansion, or expansion of a building, or a remodel, to allow construction of a ADU. However, we wanted to make it clear that it would be the same criteria that we use for exempting projects from DRB today. So you'll see that there's a section that we've added to the ordinance that basically allows modification of the main residence for an ADU. They can add up to 500 square feet, as long as they're within the FAR constraint for the property itself. They could not add a second floor, they could not change the architectural style of the facade of the building, and they wouldn't be able to add a new door to the front facade. That would be consistent with something we would do now for any project coming in for design review. And so with those changes, we are presenting this ordinance to you for your consideration. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. I have 25 cards. Do you want, shall we listen, what's the consensus? Do we want to ask questions, or?
I'm finding it.
Let's, let's hear the public.
Hi, let's hear the public.
Kathy Yurka, followed by Stephen Hunt.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I'm grateful to staff for their thoughtful work on the interim urgency ordinance. I know that cities have been scrambling to put something in place ever since the state published its guidelines for this poorly-written law in mid-December. I and others were surprised when strong objections were raised last week that seemed to threaten its speedy adoption, the speedy adoption of the ordinance. The point of the interim ordinance is to create protections immediately, which would mitigate the worst potential impacts of the law on Glendale's older, established neighborhoods. I want to address briefly the objections raised last week. Per the state law, the minimum size of an ADU is 100 and square feet for two people. 500 square feet is well above that, and as the previous maximum size of guest houses in Glendale, it's ideal for easing us in the transition to ADUs. Changing the floor area ratio should not be considered now. That's a very careful calculation that requires extensive further study, as I think those totally bewildering numbers suggested. State guidance on the law explicitly invites cities to create owner-occupancy requirements. These respect the interests of local homeowners and residents whose investment in the community is not limited to an economic one. And I think the one-unit versus two-unit issue raises serious problems of enforcement. Last week, TGHS requested that the final ordinance require that ADUs be out of the public view on all historic district properties, and not only contributors. We were pleased and grateful that staff included that provision in a second draft of the interim ordinance, the one that was just presented now, and also pleased that staff did not alter the maximum square footage or the floor area ratio.
Two minutes, was that two minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I had three. Oh. May I just have three more seconds? I'm sorry. The essential fact of this law is its limitations on design review and lack of opportunity for public comment. The affordable housing goals are good, but the law, the state law, is not. Glendale's staff created a good interim solution for implementation. We respectfully request that you adopt the interim ordinance as soon as possible, preferably with the owner-occupancy requirement reinstated. I think that's really important to a lot of people in this room tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kusakian, I guess I failed to mention, we'll give you two minutes.
I think you didn't.
Did I say that? Okay. And if you don't want to take two minutes, that's okay. You can, but you can give it to somebody else, okay? All righty. Okay, Stephen Hunt?
Good evening, Madam Devine, City Council members. You know, some of the changes that have been made in Glendale are easily reversible, perhaps in the future. For instance, the speed limit on West Glen Oaks went from 35 to 40 miles per hour. Hopefully sometime in the future, that would be something that if we were allowed to do it, would be easy to reverse. But when you build a structure in Glendale, that you can't reverse. My house is 80 years old, and it has a lot of years left in it. I, recently, a neighbor built a house, I saw, boy, those steel beams going in and all. I swear that house can last 150 years. And what this ordinance is doing, what the state law is doing, is of course allowing structures to be built. And once they're there, there's no reversing that. They're grandfathered in. So I'm just asking the Council to consider moving slowly, to be conservative on this, so that as we move forward with the other cities and get better clarification on the state law, that we don't have too many structures that have popped up all over the place that are, will be there for 150 years. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Sue Mon, followed by Barbara Malone.
Hi, good evening, Ms. Mayor and City Council members. I'm not really prepared, and I don't know all the details of everything that's going on, but I just wanted to show up and present myself as someone who is really in support of you guys adopting this ordinance. I recently moved to Glendale, like, maybe nine years ago, and I love my neighborhood, and I love everything about the city, and I'm really concerned that it's going to end up looking more like Hollywood, which I moved away from. So I want to keep the integrity of my neighborhood. I don't think my house is in a residential or a historic zone, and I don't think that it should only be historic zones that we're concerned about. I think it should be all of Glendale, all homes, every, everyone's property is important. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Malone, followed by Jerry Cragnotti.
Good evening, City Council members and Madam Mayor. I'm a resident of Glendale, but for most of my life, I was a resident of Los Angeles City. And I know how destructive to neighborhoods it can be if there are lax regulations and ordinances about building limits. Since I moved to Glendale, I've just been thrilled to be a part of a city that protects its neighborhoods, and I would love for that to continue. The way a neighborhood looks has to do with the quality of life of the people who live there. I know this because my spirits have been so much higher since I've been living in Glendale. I ask you to adopt this interim motion, ordinance, because I know that there are people who, because they want to realize money from rushing in and building, for instance, in a front yard, a second building. So I urge you to please, please, limit any changes that are not conducive to community. Thank you.
Jerry Cragnotti, followed by Chris Cragnotti.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Let's see, 31 days in January, eight in February. 38 days ago, this ordinance went into effect in the state of California. I can bet, and I bet you would agree, 99% of the residents in California are totally unaware of it. About two weeks ago, we became aware of it in Glendale. About 99% or more don't know anything about it. And yet we are discussing and trying to put points in place for an interim ordinance. To me, the operating word here is interim. It's an interim ordinance. It doesn't need to be vetted, it's a good ordinance for what it is. The real time for you to have these discussions is, A, when we have five members on our council, not four, and when it will be the real ordinance. The public will be informed, the residents will be up to speed, and there will be much more discussion, intellectual, intelligent discussion on this subject. Right now, past the interim ordinance, nothing to lose, nothing to gain, it just helps us get on the books as required by the state ordinance. This is a new ordinance for the state, let's face it, there's going to be a lot of blowback over time with the state as well, trying to change some of this from the cities. It's probably not the same ordinance today as it's going to be months from now. So to start fooling around with this thing now and trying to make your changes and everything, I don't think it's right. I think we need five members, and I think we have to wait till we have a lot more information to make something really on the books. Thank you.
Chris Cragnotti, followed by Arthur De León.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Chris Cragnotti, resident of Glendale. I'm going to echo pretty much everything you've heard so far. I think it's really important that we remember that Glendale's always been a very conservative city in terms of growth and things like that, and it seems unnecessary, really, to act too swiftly. The state, in its own ordinance, has said that garages can be converted to living space for these circumstances. In a garage, I can tell you the vast majority of them are 400 square feet or smaller in the city of Glendale. So a 500-square-foot accessory dwelling is certainly larger than what the state even considers to be a minimum. So it doesn't seem necessary at this stage of the game to expand the size to anything beyond that. So I just ask that you take your time with this type of a situation, this particular situation, and give it the time that it needs. Like Jerry said, a full dais would be great, get all the stakeholders involved, and take it one step at a time. It just doesn't seem appropriate to rush, to rush this type of a thing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Arthur De León, followed by Jerome Sanders.
Madam Mayor and City Councilman, thanks for allowing me to speak. One of the things we wanted, I wanted to discuss is, why did this come about? The reason why this came about is because cities are not providing enough affordable housing to individuals. This is why this bill came about. The idea is to provide additional affordable housing to individuals, and to make it available so that the rents don't keep going up like they do in Glendale. We've heard many times people complain about how high the rents are, and one of the reasons is because there's not enough affordable housing. In the code you guys referred to, 6585.2, it says here, as one of the requirements, the unit is not intended for sale, it may be rented. In this situation, it cannot be rented. So there's no additional housing, and that's one of the goals of the bill. And additionally, I wanted to find out what the, according to this particular code, it defines a second unit also as an efficiency unit, as defined in Section 179581 of Health and Safety Code. And I wonder if anybody can tell us what an efficiency unit is? And second, it says a manufactured home, as defined in Section 18007 of the Health and Safety Code. That means that these two additional options could be part of this bill, and I don't know if somebody could explain that at some point. Thank you.
These units are for rent, aren't they? That's what they are? Rental, rental units?
Yeah, they can be rented. I think the distinction is, there's either going to be provision that the owner has to live on the site, or if he or she doesn't, then they cannot rent the unit.
Jerome?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilman. Preservation of our unique Glendale residential neighborhoods and historic districts really requires that you implement the ordinance as it was presented last week. The temporary plan submitted by the planning departments is an intelligent response to the challenge presented by the state on the issue of accessory dwelling units, and I urge you to, to get out ahead of this issue and lead on it by passing the temporary ordinance tonight. And please preserve the owner-occupant section of the ordinance. Thank you.
Antonio Ganella, followed by Peter Fwad.
Good evening, Madam Devine and Councilmembers. As a 30-year LA resident, I'm here to voice my support in favor of the interim emergency ordinance. My hope is that we can preserve the character of Glendale that originally drew all of us here, and that we can work together to avoid dimensionization and compound building that sadly and increasingly defies much of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Fwad, followed by Myrna Stanley.
Madam Mayor, I'm members of council, I'm Peter Fwad, President of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association. I'm here tonight on behalf of the association. We urge you to adopt the urgency ordinance as staff is prepared and amended tonight. As some of the other speakers have said tonight, it's only a temporary ordinance. I think it's better to err on the side of being safe than being expansive. When these things are built, as the first speaker said, they can't be unbuilt, and if you try to tighten, if you see abuses and try to tighten the ordinance later, there's going to be, you know, hell to pay, because people will say, you're unfair, you let that guy build a big thing, and I can't build that? So you're inviting a clash in the future. Why not play it safe, take it incremental, and study, study the complaints and the ordinances that comes along? I've seen this as being one of the most important pieces of legislation that's come along in a long time, that directly affects our neighborhoods. I mean, for a long time, we, the association, have fought people putting on second units on lots, and now they're going to be legal, but which is, you know, which is the state's decision to increase affordable housing. This will be a hot topic in the elections. We're having a campaign forum again this year, as we usually do. This will be on the agenda. People, as I said, 99% may not know about this, but in a couple of weeks, they will. So this is a big thing in the community. I think, you know, the size of the crowd evidences that. So this is very serious, and, you know, it'll affect my house, your homes, very directly. And finally, one of the problems we've seen since the, since the staff reductions earlier last year, where the number of city inspectors have gone from five, originally, down, down to two people. We are already seeing problems with enforcement of ordinances. It's a complaint-driven system. We probably were off the phone calling Neighborhood Services, and it's just not enough people to really go out there on a prompt basis. We're seeing a lot of illegal, unpermitted building. This ordinance will, you know, enlarge that, because all of a sudden, there'll be all these new projects. So whatever happens on the ordinance, please consider, if your budget can do it, hire some more inspectors, so whatever you do adopt, you know, we can enforce. Thank you.
Myrna Stanley, followed by John Rufzel.
Good evening, Madam Devine and Councilmembers, Myrna Stanley, Perdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association. I just want to give you a gentle nudge to please adopt the emergency interim ordinance. Remember that title. If you adopt it, we'll have something instead of nothing. And then whatever your concerns are, whether it's with the minimums or the maximums, at least we'll have protection in place while we address your concerns, as well as your constituents' concerns. I just want to add something that, regarding the proposal to not require the property owner to live in either the main dwelling or the ADU, in my opinion, I think you would be creating rental duplexes in our residential areas, and that's not a positive. Thank you.
John, followed by Daniel. John, followed by Daniel Brotmar.
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is John Reitzel. I'm here with my wife, and we are Northwest Glendale homeowners. I've been in Glendale for 43 years, and I've seen a lot of changes, some I've agreed with, some I haven't. But I think there's one caveat that is important here, that quick and less deliberate legislation, and I think this comes at the state level, makes for bad results. And I think that's possible if you do not adopt this interim ordinance. I think, take time to reflect, look at the impact, not just for us. I think all of you represent all of Glendale. Two of you I've had the pleasure of meeting, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Najarian. And you asked for our support, you asked for our votes. We gave it to you. Now we're asking you to show process, deliberation, reflection, adopt the interim ordinance, let the public have a bigger voice in the decision process. Thank you.
Daniel Brotmar, followed by Mike Mohill.
Hi, Madam Mayor and Councilman. It's Daniel Brotman, but you are close enough. I live in Verdugo Woodlands, and I think almost everything has been said. I just want to add my voice to those calling for you to pass this emergency interim ordinance. I think it just gives us breathing room to think about it. I understand that the state has reasons why they've adopted this rule, and it makes sense. But we just need to think about how we adapt that to our current situation in Glendale. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Mohill, followed by Valerie Gardner.
My name is Mike Mohill. Staff did an excellent job last week with the minimum requirements that the state would require for the ADUs. I agree with Kathy Yorca of the Glendale Historical Society. She hit the nail on the head. Why don't? While I don't agree with the state's mandate, we must comply. The goal of the state is to offer affordable housing. 500 square feet for an ADU is a livable space and will not destroy our neighborhoods and create parking problems. More than 500 square feet will not be affordable for many and will create parking problems. Why do some councilmembers want to be less stringent? For example, in Singapore, Hong Kong, and Tokyo, most people live in a 700-square-foot dwelling with a husband, wife, and two kids. 500 square feet is more than adequate for affordable housing. We must have the city require that ADUs to conform with our neighborhoods' architectural styles, especially in our historic districts. And we must make certain that the city requires an owner to live on the premises. We must take the conservative approach. Any ADU more than 500 square feet will defeat the purpose of affordable housing, which is the state's ultimate goal. And not having an owner on the property to live on the premises will create havoc. Thank you.
Valerie Gardner, followed by Carol Bruchet.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm here as a resident of Glendale because I care, and I support your approval for this urgency ordinance as prepared by the staff. And while I'm here, I also wanted to say that I'm really concerned about what I'm seeing in Glendale. I feel like I can drive down almost any street in the downtown area, and I see condo after apartment building going up, one after another. And I'm just wondering, how can the public stay informed? How can the public have a voice in what's happening in downtown Glendale? And where do I go to get information and to have my voice heard, in my opinion? I'm very concerned about our resources, our police, our firefighters, our schools, the impact all of these large buildings will have on our city resources. So thank you.
I suggest that you go to our website, and that information is available.
And that, and certainly Mr. Lorenz is back there. Tom, wave your hand. We will get you on every noticing list that we have for a very robust social media apparatus.
Right. Right. She'll be in the know. She'll be in the know, real fast. Hi, Carol.
Hi, I'm Carol Bruchet. I live in Northwest Glendale. I'm a member of Northwest Glendale Homeowners. And I had all these things written down to say, but I'm just going to cut it short. I urge you to pass the interim urgency ordinance. Everything that Peter Fwad said, everything that Jerry Cragnotti said is exactly the way I feel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ellie Lester, followed by Grant Michaels. Or is it Eli? Ellie? Eli, okay. It's spelled with an I.
Evening, Mayor Devine, Council. I wanted to add my voice. There's been a lot of requests that you go ahead and adopt this emergency or urgent or urgency ordinance. But in particular, there was two points that I wanted to mention. Owner occupancy is important, I believe, in this case. Sort of granny flats, outbuildings, it's part of the traditional built form of a traditional city. It can fit into neighborhoods because it doesn't necessarily change the character of the neighborhood. That's the key. And as having been both a renter and a property owner, I've experienced both conditions. As a renter, you often do not have an authority with sufficient power to help you. You have no recourse often if you have a grievance, or there's a problem with, say, decorum or propriety. Now, if the owner is on site, you have someone you can appeal to. Also, the owner has to look all of his neighbors in the eye when he makes these changes, and I believe that will help create a better outcome. As well as the units being small. In traditional cities, these were generally for singles, for couples, not for large families, to avoid the tenement effect. So those two things, I think, would be really important to make sure that they make it into any ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Grant Michaels, followed by Thomas Hendricks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Grant Michaels. I'm the president of the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. First, let me thank our mayor for serving as our installation officer, for installing the new offices for this year, and for her comic musings, as well as for the councilmembers for attending the installation as well. During that event, I know the ADUs and the ordinance was a great topic of conversation, and you heard from many of our members, many of the neighborhoods, and they shared their opinions with you. So I thank you for taking the time to listen to them. You've heard everyone here speak tonight. The goal of the Homeowners Coordinating Council is to preserve, protect, the quality of life, the compatibility of our neighborhoods. This interim ordinance does work towards that. I would encourage you to listen to the neighborhoods, the people who have spoken, and consider that in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thomas Hendricks, followed by Frank Gallo.
Mayor Devine, City Councilmembers and staff. I've lived in Glendale for approximately 60 years in the Montecito Park area of Glendale. I'm presently the vice president of the Montecito Park Homers Association, but I'm representing myself tonight. I believe that the California Senate Bill 1069 is a bad piece of legislation. It takes local control away from the city of Glendale and other municipalities, and therefore, I believe it is essential that we pass the urgency accessory dwelling unit ordinance this evening in its more restrictive form as staff has presented. I think it's very important that we do not build things, as the previous person said, hard to ever remove at once built. So I have also submitted a written email with more details, generally consisting of what's been said tonight. That includes a rational basis for a 266-square-foot unit, which would be more than sufficient to do it. So we need to buy time to carefully think this through, to see however it goes, and therefore, I do recommend passing the emergency ordinance in its restrictive form as presented this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Gallo, followed by Lorna Vartanian.
Councilmembers, my name is Frank Gallo. Certainly, we want to protect the character of our neighborhoods, especially those with historic value. But we also need to address the lack of affordable housing. Placing reasonable restrictions on ADUs can accomplish both goals. But a blanket ADU ordinance that addresses all areas of town as if they were a mirror of each other is unreasonable. Under Bill 1069, Section 65583, the city is allowed to identify ADU adequate sites by a variety of methods, including, but not limited, to redesignation of the property to a more intense use, increasing the density of an area within one or more categories, or the city can also identify size for accessory dwelling units based on the number of accessory dwelling units developed in that area, whether or not those units are legal or illegal. All of that is in the state's legislation. Rushing the pass of a poorly crafted ordinance not only limits the city, but also might cause a problem in the near future. The problem that I have with an interim ordinance is that in Los Angeles, rent control was initially intended as a temporary measure, and is no longer a temporary measure. Thank you very much.
Lorna Vartanian, followed by April Gustafson.
Mayor, oops, sorry. Mayor Devine, members of council and staff. Lorna Vartanian, president of the Rossmoyn Mountain HOA. The Board of Directors of the Rossmoyn Mountain HOA strongly urges City Council to adopt this interim ordinance as presented by staff until a final ordinance can be crafted. This complex new law demands that careful thought and consideration be given to the long-term effects and potential negative impacts this state mandate will have on our community. Land use in Glendale is not the same as in San Diego, or Sacramento, or in Lone Pine, or in Fresno. It is not the same in Rossmoyn as in the Rancho, or in the Chevy Chase Canyon, or in Adams Hill. Please accept the draft ordinance for what it is, a temporary way to mitigate the worst potential impacts of ADUs in our neighborhoods, while buying the city time to create a final ordinance that would go through the Planning Commission, allow public input, then return to council for final consideration. We know there is an affordable housing crisis throughout the state of California. However, we didn't get there in a week, and it would benefit us all to take more than a week to determine what works best for Glendale. We have worked so hard as a city to create the DSP zone in order to protect our single-family neighborhoods from increased density. We have added thousands of new housing units downtown. Without local guidelines for this new law, our single-family neighborhoods could quickly convert to multifamily neighborhoods with two houses on every lot. We don't believe this is what Glendale residents want, and it is not what we want. We hope you can each find it within you tonight to reach consensus on the interim ordinance, even if that consensus is more conservative than what you will ultimately be comfortable with. Thank you.
April Gustafson, followed by Jennifer Bund.
Good evening, Mayor Devine and City Councilmembers. My name is April Gustafson. I did email you today a list of things about street parking. One of them was assuming there are two people, a couple, living in one of these ADUs. Most houses in my neighborhood can fit two cars in front of their house, and maybe you have two cars in the driveway, but that's your choice. Assuming that these people that rent the ADUs have friends coming over, family, assuming we do too, who live in the larger home, I can conceivably see an issue where parking will become quite congested. This is kicking the can down the road and just thinking about the social consequences of this. Assuming the ADUs are approved, will there be considerations made regarding Glendale's no-smoking ordinance that we have for apartments to be extended to ADUs? Because ADUs conceivably turn residential homes, that is, single-family homes, into mixed housing with higher density, can residential homes now have the same extension of a no-smoking policy? I live in an area where I'm bothered by, my neighbor's cigar smoke, and he's behind me, assuming that every neighbor that has a backyard that is adjacent to mine pops in an ADU that's much closer density. It's practically like an apartment. One would hope that you'd look at the social consequences of that and do an impact study and consider having a no-smoking ordinance to all residential places that consider having ADUs. I'd like to also hope that you do an impact study regarding the fire risk to these ADUs. Being at the back of properties, hard to reach. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Bund, followed by Robert Nixon.
Hi, good evening. I don't really have too much more to add, other than I really hope that time is considered. I think once you get and start approving things without having all the proper guidelines in place, it's a slippery slope, and we end up with our neighborhoods not being as beautiful as they are now. I grew up in Orange County. I love Glendale. I love being here. I love the architecture. I love the neighborhoods. Friends and family that come to visit constantly comment on that, and I hope that the interim ADU ordinance goes into place to allow for time to really make sure that those things are preserved for us residents that are here now and for future generations. Thank you.
Robert Nixon, followed by Laura Gilery.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Bob Nixon. I sent each of you an email yesterday supporting adoption of the interim ordinance. I'm here tonight to oppose the provision allowing a non-resident property owner to build an auxiliary unit. That provision is practically unenforceable either by the city, or by the landlord, or even by the neighbors, who might go to a neighbor-owner and ask what's going on. In many cases, the neighbors won't know who the property owner is. California law requires landlords to meet certain legal obligations. They need to keep safe properties. They need to protect from injury on the property. A property owner with an auxiliary unit in the back is by nature going to take care of that property. He's going to make sure that conditions are safer than an absentee landlord who may not know and may not care about conditions at the property. So I would encourage you to adopt the interim ordinance, but not with the provision allowing for a non-resident landlord. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Gilery, followed by Derek Kattow.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name's Laura Gilery, and I live in Adams Hill area. Many of you are familiar with that area, with the very narrow streets, and in many cases, I live on a street that has one lane for traffic in both directions. My major concern is parking, because if you have an accessory unit, and most people have cars, and they park, emergency vehicles will be unable to get up and down that street. I've watched fire trucks, okay, inch-long, okay, and almost taken half an hour to be able to get to the residents that they need to get to. And so with only one lane, I think that the interim ordinance should have some requirement that new parking be required for places that new parking be required for places where you have only one lane, and where there's parking on that only one side of the street. Because I believe that it would present a threat to the life of the residents when emergency vehicles cannot actually get to that location. When we have trash trucks up the street, trash, the refuse vehicles, which can go on all day, it starts at 7:30 in the morning, and doesn't really end until about 3:00. I've watched the emergency vehicles, they cannot get up the street. And I've driven on -- you people have to back up, turn into driveways, in order to be able to reroute and not get beyond the truck. So I think it needs to be looked at on a case-by-case basis for the neighborhood, and where you have limited access for emergency vehicles. I believe that needs to be added before the units get built. That's my concern about it being an interim. If you have something that's built under the interim ordinance, and it does not address that safety issues, it could really present a safety issue for our residents. Thank you.
Mr. Ochoa, we're doing a study, aren't we, about streets' width?
Yes, ma'am.
The width of streets?
As you had heard last time, part of the discussion, one of the areas where we do have some latitude and some discretion, is on street widths. And so hillside neighborhoods, perhaps, certainly neighborhoods like Adams Hill, probably would be, we would have the authority to restrict the application of this.
We do have a list, as of actually this morning, that does give us a list of all the cities, or all the streets in Glendale with a width of 27 feet or less. The reason we picked 27 feet is that parking on one side of the street generally is eight feet wide, and then you need 20 feet for emergency access vehicles. So we figured if it was 28 feet or larger, then we wouldn't have an access problem. But as the resident noted, we do have quite a number of streets where we have, we have streets that are around 15 feet wide as far as paving. So we do have that list. I mean, we would be able to know what those streets are if you wanted to give us direction related to that tonight.
Thank you. Derek. Is it Catao?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and Staff. I'm here to, you know, I'm here to lend my support for all of you to adopt the emergency ordinance. I'm a resident of Glendale, lived in northwest Glendale for about 20 years. And the reason why I choose to live here, and I continue to live here, is because of the beautiful character homes and the neighborhoods. So please, support the emergency ordinance that staff has put forward. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Francesca Smith, followed by Rondi Warner.
Hi. I'll try to be as quickly, quick as possible. I'm Francesca Smith. I'm representing myself on this. I ask that you adopt the interim urgency ordinance as proposed in its most restrictive form. As everyone else has said, once things start happening, you can't put the genie back in the bottle. Suggest that occupancy be limited to property owners, which includes extended families. People are sort of acting as though it means only, like, a mommy and a daddy and two babies can live on the property. I recommend retaining the existing established four-area ratios, and that it's crucial to the interim ordinance. The protection of designated landmarks and historic districts should absolutely be included as it is in the interim urgency ordinance. We all, there are so many people here for this item, as you know, and a lot of people don't want to take up your time like I am. Can I just ask that people stand up if they're here in support of the urgency ordinance? Is that okay with you all? Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No. Thank you, Francesca. Rondi Warner.
I am President of the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association, and a resident of Glendale for over 30 years. Adams Hill is very alarmed by the potential impact of the granny flat ordinance on our city. It would create blight, destroy our neighborhood character, and do very little to address skyrocketing housing costs. Low-income families are a paycheck away from homelessness, and highly educated professionals can't even afford to live anywhere near the businesses or the schools where they work. We need to push back on these well-intended but disastrous ordinances, and work with all stakeholders to find solutions to the housing crisis. In the meantime, we need to adopt this emergency ordinance while we work together for solutions that don't cause more problems than they solve. Thank you.
David Miller.
Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm obviously here to support the adoption of the ordinance, but I also am one that thinks it might not go far enough, in particular, related to garages. I know that the state has their own rules about garage conversions. I assume that when most people are going to do one of these, they'll probably start with a garage, rather than build something from scratch. I live in northwest Glendale, where a lot of the properties, mine included, all the houses are from the 1930s, excuse me, and all of the garages of my neighbors are on the property line. So the wall of the garage behind me, the wall of the garage next to me, now if those are turned into ADUs, and they want to put in a window, which they're allowed to do, I'd have people staring at me while I sit in my backyard. So I would hope that if it doesn't happen in this, in a future ordinance, that you guys really come up with some good guidelines for garage conversions that deal with that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my cards from the public for tonight, so I will open it up for discussion, my colleagues. Would anyone like to begin with questions and comments?
Yeah, I...
Councilmember Garpadian.
Just going to ask some questions, and I defer to my colleagues and see what they have to say. First of all, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. This is what we like, public participation. It's important for us to hear your opinion as well in everything we do. Few questions for our city attorney. If this ordinance passes tonight, what is the process after that? It's an urgency ordinance. My understanding was it's 45 days, then it expires, or you can extend it more, or if you can extend it from there on, how many months? Just give us some dates and timeline, please.
Sure. So the authority by which the council would be adopting this ordinance is in the government code for urgency ordinances, and under that authority, the initial ordinance would be effective for 45 days. And before that time, I think 10 days before its expiration, the city staff has to prepare a report to the council outlining the status of the interim ordinance, and what steps have been taken so far to move forward to the permanent ordinance. Before the 45 days is up, if the council wants to extend it, then it would have to adopt an ordinance extending the ordinance. It could do so, what the statute says, for 10 months and 15 days. I do believe that the council has the authority to extend it for less than 10 months and 15 days. But it can only, council could only extend it two times, for a maximum of two years from the beginning of the ordinance to the end. So that's essentially what happens. If the council, if the ordinance expires on its own prior to being extended, the council would be without authority to adopt a new ordinance covering the same topic. So in other words, if the council desires to, we will be before you, the staff will be before you if this comes before, because obviously, staff would be of the view, we can't bring all the, do all the actions that are necessary to adopt the permanent ordinance within 45 days. So we will be before you, before that 45 days, to introduce and adopt a new ordinance extending the ordinance that, if it gets adopted tonight.
Okay. So 10 days before that 45 days, we would know, how much time do we need to have community outreach, to get all the stakeholders involved, and see what kind of ordinance we want to craft? And from there on, we can say, okay, at the 45 days before expiration, we want to extend it to another three months, six months, or eight months. So will give us enough time to draft the ordinance the way it's...
Correct. Whatever public outreach and stakeholder outreach the council wants the staff to proceed with, and then, of course, we have to ultimately go to the Planning Commission before we can come back to the council with the full ordinance.
Thank you. I'm just going to stop here. I'm here at my clogs.
Anyone else? Councilmember Najari?
Just a silly question, and then I'll get into something more serious. But when you talk about no new door on the front facade, you mean no additional door on the front facade. Someone must replace their door. You can do that. So maybe we can, we can do that. So now, a little more serious. I am, I am very unhappy with the state's action in passing this bill. The stated goal is to create more affordable housing, but I think there's many other ways that they could do so that would not impact the single-family neighborhoods, not just in Glendale, but throughout the state. There's different incentives they could provide, there's different inclusionary requirements that they could provide, and new multifamily buildings, but that's not what they did. What they're doing in this is they're basically changing the fabric of our neighborhoods by making every single-family neighborhood a duplex neighborhood. And the number-one thing that we hear, that I hear about, are traffic problems, parking problems in many of our neighborhoods, and this is what's going to happen. We're just going to exacerbate the situation. So I'm very unhappy with the state's action. And my question to the city attorney is, can we declare a moratorium on this until staff really works out the details, such as the gentleman's point about a window? Someone whose garage, current garage, butts the rear setback, could potentially put in a window, and boom, there he is, looking in his backyard. So these are a lot of little nuances that, as we just talked about as a community, come to mind, that perhaps our interim ordinance does not address. So the first question is, can we put a moratorium in until we work this out for 45 days, or whatever? Because people are going to, people are listening. There's landlords out there, homeowners, that are, you know, happy days. I can rent, convert that garage and get an extra income stream. And it's not necessarily going to be affordable. That's the problem about this bill. It's not going to be affordable. They're going to look at all these apartments that they built on Central and on Brand, and say, gee, they're getting $3 a square foot, $4 a square foot for those. Well, this is a private entrance. It's like a little house. I'm going to ask as much. So I think the intent to create affordable housing is misguided in this effect. So, Mr. City Attorney, can we pass a moratorium pending a ordinance which would deal with ADUs?
As much as I think we'd like to as well, at the staff level, our view is that we can't. And the reason is that the statute is written in such a way to require the city to approve ministro building permits within 120 days of getting application. And there's no, I think that preempts any additional authority the city may have to enact moratorium. And I can't in good conscience advise you to take that risk, only to have us, the moratorium struck down, and then us be stuck with only the state standards. So that's our view, that we have to have something in place. And you noted that one of the problems with the state law, at least for Glendale, and maybe some other cities in our situation, unlike our neighbors, because we had the ban in place for 20 years, a lot of our neighboring cities just had to kind of update their ordinance. Well, we have to, we have to start from scratch, and so that's what the pressure that we're feeling, to get something in place that is protective as possible. But we have to deal with that.
Okay. Therefore, in your advice, although I'd like to push for a moratorium until we can work this out, doing so may cause us to be shot in the foot and default into the very large state standard of 1,200 square feet, which I think is just outrageous. So I would, I would urge my colleagues to support the staff's recommendation, and really work on this as a community in the next 45 days, or perhaps with an extension, so we can fine-tune. There's a lot of fine-tuning that we need to do, but that takes time, and I know my colleagues have great ideas on certain adjustments, but I would support the staff's recommendation and lock this into place. And unfortunately, it's a sad day when the state of California tells a charter city like Glendale how we have to administer our zoning requirements. And I'm very upset about that. Is Laura Friedman's rep still in the room? Because I would say, first thing, go back and try and revise this law, and give us a little more authority, because it's just simply not fair. But being as it is, I would support the staff's recommendation.
I'd just like to interject that I have talked to her about that, and I think one of the best comments that was made tonight was the fact that this legislation can change in the future if we, if we work with our elected officials, and hopefully, we can bring about some sort of change. Next? Okay. Councilmember Sinani.
So let me thank you all for coming and expressing your thoughts about the ordinance. Your microphone.
Of course, that helps. So thank you for coming and expressing your thoughts on the ADU ordinance. You're all here because you care about your neighborhoods, same as I think every one of us on this dais. I don't want my neighborhood turning into a bunch of duplexes all over the place, because that's not what I was bargaining for when I decided to live there and buy a home. You're on the same, you're in the same boat. But the state is not to be trifled with. I think they had good intent, but the implementation seems to be shoddy, to put it mildly. And it's not a very thoughtful approach to a problem that requires a lot of thought, a lot of thought, a lot of nuance, and a very close, you know, very careful approach. So if this ordinance is merely a temporary measure of 45 days, I'm very open to having a limited, the limited version that the staff has prepared, because in 45 days, we'll have better opportunity to think about this, to think about the details, and how do we satisfy the state's intended goal, and not run afoul with them, and at the same time, how do we not turn our neighborhoods into something that we don't want our neighbors to turn into?
Thank you. Mr. Garpadian, did you have anything to add?
Yes, yes, I do. Again, thank her for being here. I want to, I want to clear some of the issues that was brought up. We received about maybe 50 to 70 emails, and the reason we didn't respond to all of them was because there was no time for us to respond to every single one of them. But there were some points that was brought up, and I want to make sure that the community is clear that it was said that we are trying to pass this ordinance intentionally not to have design review, which is wrong. We don't want to have, not have a design review. There would be some sort of a design process, if I'm not mistaken, or should be some sort of a design process. Also, it was indicated that we're trying to increase the square footage over what the state has approved, which is, which is not true. We're not trying to do that. Also, not having any debate on the terms, it's not a healthy thing to do, you know, asking, just don't debate on anything, don't discuss anything, just approve it. Debating tonight, or last week, is healthy, because it will help staff to get some ideas as to how to craft the final ordinance. They always look for some sort of guidance and suggestions from the council. On Adams Hill, I'm going to emphasize on Adams Hills today, because the lack of street parking is going to be a huge issue, especially in hillside neighborhoods, that we have to address it. And I'm going to go to the zoning, I asked for the zoning map to be emailed to me this afternoon, and I'm going to bring this issue up. Maybe you can look into it while we're looking into this ordinance. I called the state, and I spoke to a couple of representatives who were involved in crafting this document, this ordinance, or state law. This is not that new. It was introduced February of 2016. It was passed the Senate on May 16, 2016, passed the Assembly on August, and it was passed, it was signed into law on September 27, 2016. So this was coming, and people know about it. And I want to give the residents of the city the benefit of the doubt, that if this ordinance is not there, that hasn't been in place for five weeks, we deferred or defaulted to the state's regulations, nobody came in and forced the city to build a unit with the regulations that the state has at this time. I just want to give our neighbors, our constituency, our residents, the benefit of the doubt, that not everybody's going to run out there, try to take advantage of this. There will be some people, that's for sure, that's always there, but I want to, I want to give the benefit of the doubt to our neighbors as well. Blanket ordinance, we need to be very careful. It was brought up. It's a correct statement. You cannot have a blanket ordinance when the time comes to draft the final ordinance, because the topography is different, and the zoning is different. We have three residential zonings for single families. R1 District 1, R1 District 2, and R1 District 3. District 3 has the highest density allowable. So if you are in R1, especially R1R District 3, you get 45% up to 10,000 square foot of your lot. of your lot, you get 45% of building that you can build. So Adams Hills is one of them. And I've been, you know, I've talked about this issue in the past, so the chances of people building ADUs on hillside properties is a lot more than the flatlands, like Verdugo Woodlands where I live, which I love my neighborhood, northwest Glendale, north of Glen Oaks, those are R1 District 1, which you can have only 30% of your lot area up to 10,000 square feet, you can have 30% of the building. So I want to make sure we look into our zoning density as well when we're going through this process. And one other thing that it hasn't brought up, and they told me about it, and it shocked me even more, is JADUs, it's junior accessory dwelling units. And the junior accessory dwelling units, they don't even need an ordinance. You don't have to have an ordinance in place for them to convert it. So what I understood in like half an hour discussion that I had was, if your house, within the envelope of your house, you can turn it into a duplex without providing a separate entry, a separate meter for your gas, water, or electricity, you don't have to provide any parking, you're not required to provide any parking. So you can allocate portion of your house and make it a dwelling unit, an accessory dwelling unit, they call it junior accessory dwelling unit, and rent it out. And if it's within the envelope of your building, so the question was, if the garage is attached, what are the chances? And they said, yeah, it may be converted into a unit if your garage is in the front and is attached. So that's something that we need to look into as well. I'm bringing all these up, so when the time comes to discuss all this, we will know everything that's coming up.
Junior accessory, just so there's not fear, for junior accessory dwelling units, you would need to actually specifically permit such a thing, they're not actually permitted within units. It's quite a bit different, actually, from the ADUs, which we're required to consider. We're not required to consider junior accessory dwelling units.
You're not required to consider? Are you sure?
You're not required to consider them? It would be through a separate law, but we are required to consider ADUs, not junior ADUs.
Yeah, junior ADUs is permitted with the public, local agency to whether or not to permit them.
Okay, that's good news, because that's not what I was told. So that's something that we need to look into. My biggest concern about the ordinance overall is the conversion of the garages, because as was indicated, it's the easiest way of converting, building something and putting something together, and you lose your covered parking that forces you to parking on the driveways or park out on the street off your property. And one question for staff was, this no second floor, is this new or it was part of the ordinance last week?
No, that is new. Some of the discussion that came up last week is what happens if we add it, so that's why we actually wrote exactly what we put in for DRB exemptions, and that includes you can't add a second floor. So that's why it's in the code now.
So you cannot add a unit above your garage?
Not above the garage, it's separate, it would be an add-on to your primary residence, the unit above your garage is created by the state.
Because that's one of the main concerns that I have, I'm sorry, you can.
It can't be above the garage. What the regulation that Laura wrote into this draft is to prohibit it from being built on top of your single-family house without going into the area.
But it can be over your garage.
And the law requires us to require, to allow that.
Okay, this is where I was going last week with the square footage. As a resident, I lived in that neighborhood since 1999. All of my neighbors, they have detached garages, and they're at the end of their properties. If they build a second floor on top of their garage as an accessory unit, they will look at my yard, my neighbor's yard, the neighbors across the street from me, and the one behind me. So that is the most intrusive portion of this thing. So if we can incentivize this thing not to build over the garages, give them 200 more square foot, give them 100 more square foot, to build on the ground level, not to build on the garage, I think that's something we need to look into, to incentivize this thing, because that would be the biggest disaster in our neighborhoods with the second floor over the garages. And conversion of garages is very, very important, if you can incentivize not to convert their garage and use it as a parking, because it would be a challenging situation, if you will, for our neighborhoods. And one other thing I wanted to, that was mentioned to me, was the cost. They have this ordinance that you cannot, you have to give them some sort of a discount. I don't know if that's part of it or not. I mean, we have the development impact fee for parks and libraries, I don't know if it applies to these units or not. If, I think there is a language in their ordinance that talks about making it easier on them to, as far as the permit fees go, so charge less permit fees. That's something that we need to also look into. And one other suggestion they made was, when you have your urgency ordinance in place, send it to us, let us take a look at it, because the state law says if it's too restrictive, it can be challenged. So we have time now, this passes, we'll send it out to them, maybe, this is just a suggestion to get them involved and see if they are okay with it the way it's written, so it won't be challenged in the future after we do all this work and go back and forth, Planning Commission comes back to council. So that's, those are the, my comments so far. But I think most of the south Glendale part where there is multi-residential areas, you cannot build the ADUs, because they're already multi-residential. And if you look at the map, that's why I had it today, I was trying to understand it and digest it, most of, the areas that you can put in is in residential, single-family neighborhoods. That's where these things can go. So that's why I'm really adamant about trying to incentivize this program or do something that they won't build over the garages. And also, we received, oh, this is one other thing, two more points, Madam Mayor. Received a letter from Adams Hills Homewards Association that was kind of read in here. Also, Glendale Association of Realtors, they sent a letter out, I'm just telling you what they said, this is very preliminary, that they have to comply with the FAR, which is fine, and they also said that minimum, the city's current maximum 500 square foot requirement is not consistent with our requirements of minimum 600 square foot multifamily unit. So they're asking to look into it, make it a 600 square feet instead of 500. And also, they're against the recording, against the, so they don't want to have owner occupied, which I don't know, we have to look into that, I'm not really agreeing to that. But that's another thing, we never said, we don't want the owners to live on the property. That's another thing that they mentioned was that the JADUs, the owner has to be there, but there was no mention on the ADU, so I want to get that clarified as well, to make sure that we can push forward on that. And for public to know, these are all the research that I did last few days, and discussions are good. I mean, we need to discuss issues so we can come up with an ordinance that will serve the entire community, and it will be an educated ordinance, educated-made decision. In last, was this last seven years, the report that you gave me? Last seven years, on average, there are 30 building permits were pulled for new residential projects, 30 per year. And out of that 30, there's condominium projects, and it's not distinguished as to which is which, they don't differentiate from, is it a single-family, is it an ADU, or is it a multi-residential development? So it's 30 projects per year that was done in Glendale, so that's something that, you know, just an FYI for people to know. Madam Mayor?
That it?
That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'll be brief. I also want to thank all of you for being here tonight. It gives me an opportunity to put a face to an email in a lot of cases. I think I received more emails on this particular issue than any other since I've been on council. And I want to also thank my fellow council members, because I felt it was imperative that we get an ordinance on the books tonight. And I am also in support of the interim ordinance. I think what this will give us is time for staff to come up with a really good ordinance. It will give all of you a chance to go and voice your opinions and your suggestions, and you've had a lot of good ones tonight in front of Planning Commission, and then that, they will bring, after that, it will come back to council. So we will have a good, comprehensive route to getting to a good ordinance on this particular legislation. And I do believe it's better to be conservative now, because I agree with all of you, if once it's built, it's not going anywhere, and that would be a huge mistake, I know, in a lot of cases. So, you know, I've always said that I have two goals, one is to preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods, and one is to listen to the residents of our community, and I think we've all done that tonight, and so I'm just glad that everyone got to voice their opinion. We have come to a decision, can I have a motion on the item?
One more question before we make a motion. Does this urgency ordinance go to, do we send it to Planning Commission or it's after?
Well, it takes effect and then would be, as part of the process on the permanent ordinance, that goes to Planning Commission. So they'll see, obviously, the Planning Commission will see this as part of the packet of materials that they get when they.
Within this 45 days?
Correct.
Okay, so there's another chance for the public to attend and voice their opinion.
Right, although, say, we probably won't be back to the, we may or may not be back to the Planning Commission in 45 days, but we'll be there at some point before we bring that permanent ordinance back to you.
If it goes over, we can always do an extension. Okay, do I have a motion for the item?
I'll move 7A, Madam Mayor.
If I could just, to that motion, because we, in the, yeah, under the definition of accessory dwelling unit, on section four pages, it's not in page number, but we do have to add in, as an alternative to the property owner living on the property, that if he or she doesn't live on the property, then the property has to be rented out as an entire unit, so mirroring that same language in this definition of accessory dwelling unit. And in the same vein, in section 11A, deleting 11A, because that only contains the owner-occupancy requirement, doesn't contain both requirements that are in subsection D. So those are the two changes that need to be made, if the council desires to make the requirement that the owner either live on the property, either in the main unit or the second unit, and if he or she does not, then that unit, that property can only be rented as a single rental property.
That was Mr. Sinanian's amendment, if you will. So with those corrections and modifications, I'll incorporate that in the motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garpadian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes.
Okay, now, I think we're going to have a mass exit, so we'll take a little time for the next item.
Recession?
Recession for about five minutes, thank you.
Madam Mayor, we're ready.
Thank you, okay. I'll call it order, the city council meeting, next item, please.
Next item, under Action Items, ADA is Director of Public Works Regarding Maintenance of City-Owned Ford Vehicles. ADA1 is Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing Amendment to the Contract for the Provision of Parts and Services with Los Feliz Ford, Inc., VBA Star Ford Lincoln to Increase the Contract Amount by $70,000. We're told not to exceed contract amount of $420,000.
Sergio?
Yes, ma'am, just very quickly, this is an existing contract, we're asking you that you would allow us to increase the value of the contract by 70,000, not to exceed $420,000. This is for our own Star Ford here on Brand Boulevard of Cars, they provide factory, manufacturer-authorized parts and service for us. It makes sense to utilize them rather than going to Alhambra or, I believe, North Hollywood. And so, idea here is that we are, we're consolidating more of our fleet, although it's the same size, into more Ford vehicles, so the cost of maintaining those vehicles is going up relative to the others. So we would ask that you allow us this change to this existing contract. Do you have any specific questions? I'm sure Rubik can answer those for you.
Are these vehicles electric? Any of them? All of them?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, currently, we don't have any Ford electric vehicles. We have Nissan Leves and hybrid Toyota Prius.
Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Galanian, do we receive a discounted labor rate as compared to what a member of the general public would get with regard to service on the vehicles, labor on the vehicles?
I don't believe so, Councilmember Najarian. We do, however, receive a volume discount because of the number of vehicles we take to them.
So there is a discount?
There is, yes.
Of some sort?
Any other comments? Do I have a?
I'll move the item. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpadian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes, next item, please.
He is City Attorney, Chief of Police, and Director of Community Development Regarding Street Performer Regulations. Be one as an ordinance for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
We will endeavor to do this and sing-song. No, I'm just kidding. It's just City Attorney, you ought to walk through there.
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of council, as we continue towards an 18-hour city, we continue to engage in new activity in downtown. One of those activities that we don't engage in, but that is engaged in, is our street performers in various locations in our commercial areas, and as a result, we found that there's a need to, within the confines of the First Amendment, regulate certain street performing activities so that there's ample opportunity for performers to perform, to do their, what they do, while at the same time allowing for pedestrian safety, public safety, and the like. So with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Van Miden to give a presentation and talk about what the regulations are. We've been working with downtown Glendale Association, and we've got some, you received some additional comments yesterday, so in her presentation, Ms. Van Miden will discuss those comments as well.
Thank you, good evening. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I have a... Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I have a PowerPoint presentation for you. Hopefully it won't take me too long to get through it. And I can skip over the first couple of slides because it's just a repeat.
Just use this one.
Thank you. Just a repeat of what the city attorney just said. So let me see. So as you said, over the last few, couple of years, we've had this increase. They do draw attention, crowds, and we are interested in protecting public safety as a consequence of that. Hold on, let me just make sure I'm going to the right one. It's very sensitive. So these are some of the secondary effects, and that includes blocking traffic, disrupting businesses, impairing emergency ingress and egress, impacting the pedestrian's ability to use the sidewalks and other areas safely. Street performance is protected by the First Amendment. It's a form of the exercise of free speech. However, we do have a legitimate interest in protecting the free flow of traffic and public safety. But when we do regulate public, when we do regulate free speech, it has to be constitutional. And the standards are that it has to be a content neutral regulation. It must be narrowly tailored to serve a significant governmental interest, and it must leave open adequate alternative channels of communication. So we took a look at the cases that apply, and we developed what are qualified as reasonable time, place, and manner regulations that pass constitutional muster. They're content neutral, and they leave open those areas. So we're looking at distance requirements. We're looking at the sorts of things that people might use or that could be harmful or dangerous to someone who is observing, observing a performance. So we had first to do, to develop some definitions. What does it mean to perform? To engage in performance, including playing of musical instruments, singing, dancing, some of the traditional things that we associate with public performance on the street. Who is a performer? It could be an individual or a group that conducts this form of entertainment. And what are the public areas? And they're described there. We're talking about the sidewalks, the biseos, the parkways, the walkways, and all other public spaces. So getting down into the specifics of this, so what we looked at, and we looked not just at Glendale and the width of our sidewalk areas, but we looked at other cities such as Santa Monica, Huntington Beach. We looked at ordinances from around the country, frankly, to see what, to what extent these regulations were being applied. And what we found, at least in Santa Monica and in Huntington Beach, is 10 feet seems to be a reasonable distance. It's not, it seems to be narrow enough. It's not overly broad and overly wide, so as to preclude, reasonably preclude active participation and the exercise of free speech. It's narrowly enough tailored. And so by way of example, what a 10-foot distance is, just so that you can gauge that, would be from this bar to this point right here. That's, that would be a 10-foot distance from the bar. 15 feet, a little bit further, that would be essentially to the middle of the third chair from this bar up here. That's 15 feet. Most of our sidewalks in the downtown range between 10 feet and 25 feet. So around the Americana, you will see between 20, 10 and 25 feet. Along brand, you're looking at approximately 15 feet. So if you start to look at regulations that are broader than the 10-foot requirement, it starts to become preclusive to the ability of a performer to find an area where they aren't, wouldn't be prohibited from performing. So as I mentioned, some of the other concerns that we have is what are they using during this performance? Obviously, you don't want someone juggling a torch on fire with flames flying, a chainsaw, things of this nature. There was a recommendation that we include in this list, handguns. So we've done that. There are several recommendations that were made by the DGA that we did incorporate. We don't want folks fastening all sorts of things on street lamps, on public furniture. And we don't want them co-opting bystanders into the activity either, especially where that activity has a potential to cause some form of injury. One of the recommendations in this list that we include was that of singing, but we didn't agree to that because that's typically not a form of entertainment that causes serious bodily injury. And it depends on the singing, yes, and how, whether it's, it could be screaming, that I suppose could cause serious bodily injury.
Sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
About the singing. How about the amplified musing? Sometimes you're sitting in a restaurant, and it's outdoor sitting area, and they have this amplified amplifier or what have you, and it's really, it's like my little daughter would say, it's so annoying. And it's, is that part of this, this ordinance or not?
Yes, and I will be getting to that. We do have a noise ordinance, and the street performers would be required to comply with the noise ordinance. And within the noise ordinance, we do regulate amplified sound. There is a registration for that. Folks have to come in and apply for it. And so one of the things that we do look at, as we are now processing amplified sound registrations, is the location that people are seeking. And so we don't want to overlap areas where people have these portable amplifiers. So yes, we are looking at, they have to comply with the decibel levels, things of that nature. So we did, that was something we thought about. Then the last one up there is, we want to make sure that, obviously, that we have complied with the ADA, but we, which is four feet. We made that a little bit broader, five foot clear seems to be a reasonable amount of space to allow a few people to pass by if a performer is performing on a sidewalk. So that's a continuous clear width. There was, I'll get to some of the recommendations of DGA later, which are a little broader than that. The overall, our overall response to some of these recommendations, that these areas be expanded up to 15 feet or more, is that that's not narrow, sufficiently narrowly tailored. And I'll move on to that now. As I just said, can I just click on this? Will that work?
Yes.
Okay. No, that's not-
While, while you're doing that, Jillian-
Yes.
You said the sidewalks are 25 feet wide, and you're just allowing 10 feet from the edge. Why would 15 feet not work? I'm not understanding that.
Part of the problem, around the Americana, we have a lot of activity and pre-programmed area. That is one of the spaces, one of the few only spaces, and I think we can confirm that, where there are some 25-foot sidewalk areas. One of those is along where the trolley track is. On the Central Avenue side, most, the most desirable locations near the entrance to the Americana are near the Forever 21. That's a 10-foot wide sidewalk. On the other side, those sidewalks are broader. I think they're up to 20 feet, maybe a little bit more adjacent to the entrance to the Galleria. That is a location that some street performers do prefer. So it is possible to take a look specifically at some of those locations. We are open, open to that, where there is additional room.
But yeah, I would just add, Mayor Devine, that to the extent for ease of enforcement, we're trying to keep them relatively uniform. And so if you say 15 in some areas, and then you'd have to go, and it'd be more difficult to enforce. That was the reason behind our, we were kind of looking at the lowest common denominator and say, okay, if we have some 10-foot sidewalks, 15-foot sidewalks, we should, we should probably focus on that, that type of sidewalk for the purpose of regulation.
Well, how about just putting them up against the building so that they're out of the way of foot traffic?
We're even clicking.
I think she's going to have an answer.
Okay.
At the end of the day, you want to make sure that you have a clear access to whether it's a bus stop, or an entrance, or what have you. The reason that it's not, it's 10 and not 15, in some locations, you may only have 12. If it's 15 feet, then you're precluded from performing in that area.
Right, but my question is, why not just say that they must be next to the building instead of like 10 feet or 15 feet? Because that becomes like subjective. Just say you must be close to the building so the traffic can't get by, and then you don't have to worry about the width of the sidewalk.
They could be close to the building as long as they're 10 feet away from the entrance.
Right. From the entrance.
You don't want them, you don't want them right next to the entrance, right up against, because that might inhibit your ability to enter or exit the building.
Right.
And I would note that there are probably some folks within the DGA that might not necessarily like a requirement that they be next to the building, because that's some of the complaints that we received that started our review of this particular area of regulation. So that was the other thinking, just give, have it's a sort of a number that can be used flexibly by the performer, but also easy for the city to enforce.
Okay. Hopefully that answers your question. Additional prohibitions are, obviously, we don't want folks blocking or obstructing curb cuts. There was some question about the timeframe. What we're recommending is that the performances be prohibited between 10:00 PM and 10:00 AM. The DGA wanted those performances prohibited from, they could commence at noon and continue to 7, to 9:00 PM, but nothing after that. They also, we also recommend that no animals or reptiles, birds, et cetera, be incorporated as part of any of the performances, that goods are not being sold. This is, this is performance only, donations could be accepted, but that's the extent of it. As mentioned, the noise ordinance must be complied with, and sound amplifying equipment must be registered. So here, we summarized what the changes that the downtown Glendale Association would like us to make, and the reasons why we have accepted some but not others. They wanted to add definition of street performer, which includes these groups that solicit for tips, gratitude, or general solicitations for a social cause, nonprofit organization, or political group. That's a content-based regulation, and therefore it's not constitutional, and we can't go with that. We have regulations of solicitation, commercial solicitation, and charitable solicitation already in our ordinance, and there's a distinction.
And I would just note, practically speaking, that would make the Salvation Army a street performer. And that's not the, not the intent of where we're trying to go with this.
And the Supreme Court has made very clear in a number of cases that we, we've looked at, including the Berger decision, which was a street performer in a park up in the city of Seattle, and they, and they said that such requests, such as, "I'd like you to give me some money if you enjoyed my performance." I mean, is, would that be prohibited? That's basically soliciting a donation. And actually, it was the Ninth Circuit that said that the city's rule prohibiting performers from actively soliciting donations was unconstitutional. The court found that the prohibition was content-based because it was a ban on the manner of making a request. As a result, the court applied strict scrutiny and found that the regulation did not serve a compelling governmental interest in curbing the solicitation. So it rose to a higher level because it's, it being content-based. And therefore, that was our response to this particular recommendation we can't agree with. Next, and we've already discussed this, this is increasing the distances from bus stops, street corners, crosswalks, entrances, including the width of the vestibule, to 15 feet from 10 feet. And as we've discussed, it becomes, it's not narrowly enough tailored. That's a little bit overly broad of regulation, so as to preclude and not provide an adequate alternative channel of communication. So we have constitutional issues with, with that increase. And we don't have a lot of evidence that it would allow, like I said, sufficient communication. Next, we already regulate litter, and so there was a recommendation that we add that if they generated any litter, and we have both a litter regulation and we're precluding the generation of any litter by the street performer. So we, we thought that this regulation was somewhat redundant. And next was, what the, what the ordinance proposes now is the five-foot clear along the sidewalk. The recommendation was for 10-foot. Again, we feel that was overly broad. It's adequate to have a five-foot clear. We know the ADA only requires four. Here's the timeframe that I mentioned before. They would, the DGA would prefer the performances be limited from noon to 9:00 PM. And a couple of points there in staff's response, which is that we have our noise ordinance regulates amplified sound between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Most businesses open at 10:00. And we have a policy downtown concerning the 18-hour city. So the thought was, it seemed to be a reasonable timeframe to allow street performers to perform from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Do we actually have street performers that are there at 10:00 AM or before?
Typically, I would say no. I would, I don't have personal knowledge of that, so I can't confirm that one where the other, I don't know if-
The 10:00 PM is a little bit more likely, the 10:00 AM less so.
Less so.
They're there when the people are there.
Right, around noon time, so.
No, on the weekends, you get a lot of, oh yeah, at Central and Americana, by In-N-Out over in front of the marketplace.
10:00 AM, okay. Got it. Thank you. One of-
Not that I'm certain. Den isn't of downtown or anything.
One of the concerns-
Or In-N-Out, huh?
One of the concerns that we had was mandating that the police department remove performers that were violating any of these regulations, as opposed to make, allowing the officers to retain the discretion to provide warnings, to ask them to move along. So we didn't think it was appropriate to recommend replacement of the word "may" with "shall." We've already spoken about the addition of singing to the acts prohibited that might cause great bodily harm. We don't agree that it necessarily would unless, I suppose, it was Mr. Archua that was singing. We wouldn't want that.
Harsh.
That was harsh. That was harsh. Anyway.
It's 8:14.
I know, we don't want to invite you to do it now. But in, in summary, those are, those are some of the issues that were highlighted by, by the DGA. I have to say that we met with the DGA. I know that staff did separately, folks from the city attorney's office, CDD. We circulated this draft around, and a lot of work was put into it, and a lot of care and concern for what's happening in the downtown, how people observe us, how we're able to regulate that space within this concept of the 18-hour city. So we do appreciate that input. And if you have any questions, my colleague Carmen Moreno and I are available, as well as the city attorney and the CDD staff.
When you last spoke to them, were they fairly resolute about their changes, or were they ready to concede? Is there a representative here? I don't see anyone here from the-
Yeah, we, we met with them a number of times. As Jillian noted, Mr. Lansfield's staff met with them. There was a lot of things they did agree to. We didn't know that they were still going to object to what we had proposed. We, you know, we advised them where we were, and we got the comments from them at the same time that you did.
I see.
In fact, we got them after. So we've done a lot of outreach on this with them, and there seems to be slight points of disagreement, but we feel like on some of these, they're not, it's not good, legally it's not good to adopt what DGA is, is recommending.
Any comments? Councilmember Najarian?
Couple of questions on the, I think the whole thing hinges on the definition of street performer, or the word performer, and the word perform. So do you want to include magician in there? What are you going to say, that he's acting? I mean, I think you need to expand that.
The definition of perform right now is to engage in performance, including but not limited to. You could throw in magician, you could throw in juggler, you could throw in any of these things. It wasn't meant to be limiting.
Right. We provided some examples, not necessarily, we can certainly put those in there.
I mean, I'm just, I don't know if we have a magician problem. Other cities, however, I've seen where they set up, artists set up boards and do the caricatures. I'm not sure that would fall in any of those. I'm just thinking outside the box here to see what would go.
One of the issues there, of course, is setting up a place where that individual needs to sit, the easel area, what equipment that that person might need, and the amount of space that they have to do it without obstructing the free flow of traffic. It's not something that, along, at least along the sidewalks, lends itself to that type of activity at this point in time. No performer shall place any object on a sidewalk which causes less than 10-foot, I'm sorry, 5-foot continuous sidewalk being kept clear. So we might have to cope with that on a case like-
But that wouldn't apply unless he's a performer, or he's performing. So I think- So I think you need to broaden it a little bit. How about the problem that Hollywood has with those guys in the costumes and all that? Can we prohibit that? Can we identify that as a performer and performance to regulate them from soliciting? I think the problems are very aggressive, take a picture with them, hey, you owe me money, and that sort of thing, and maybe block the, the passageway. So let's be as broad as possible, if we can, to include those.
I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing blocking passage, that obviously would be precluded, is prohibited.
But, but he would, it would only be, it would only affect them if they're a performer or they're performing.
Anyone that is blocking passage could be subject to.
Under our regular municipal code?
Yes, yeah, that would be prohibited.
As well as aggressive solicitation.
And if they are performing, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, as well as aggressive solicitation. We'll take another look at, I would suggest then the council introduce, we'll look at, we'll look at this particular definition.
Yeah, let's be broad, I guess the point is, is be as broad and think about as many issues that other cities have so we can meld it into our ordinance.
In, in drafting these definitions, and Carmen can chime in if she would like to, we did take a look at many cities' definitions, and we didn't, I think, find them to be massively inclusive of all forms of, types of performance. One of the changes we might be able to make here is, perform, perform means to engage in any kind of performance, including but not limited to. Trying to broaden it up.
It's the act, not necessarily the, the gear or the, the equipment that comes with it, although that's, that's to put into the definition as well, it's the act of performing entertainment that, that draws within it, draws it into its ambit for purposes of the regulation. So we'll, we'll just, between now and next week, we'll just see if there are any other ordinances out there that have some additional definitions that can be fine-tuned. We don't want to be so, so, have so many definitions that the definition starts to lose some efficacy. So we'll definitely look at that.
How about the religious solicitors?
Charitable solicitation?
Yeah, well.
We, we already regulate under 914 of our code.
Moonies, are the moonies around anymore? Do they still go around and solicit in such a manner? It used to be.
Not that I've seen personally.
They were the ones who.
Yeah, they're the ones.
Who I think were one of the lead cases at some point.
Yeah, those, I think, I think that's an airport case, which is a little bit different because it's not public.
It was Krishna conscious.
Hare Krishna people.
Yeah, sorry.
Hare Krishnas.
Right, not moonies.
And that was determined to be protected speech.
So this, this applies to our, hopefully soon to be a full promenade on Maryland?
It would apply to any public right-of-way, not only public right-of-way, but sidewalk, paseo.
Sidewalks, passeos, parkways.
Right.
And how would they, okay, and how would they find out about this ordinance, those that are the street performers? Are we going to somehow let them know?
I think it's on a case-by-case basis, if there are, now that we have rules, I think that the initial education effort would be with, through either CDD or police, to say, we have an ordinance now, here's, you know, we will probably prepare some fact sheet for folks to have so that they know what the, what the rules are. Because we don't have any other particular registration requirements, there's nothing on that end that they, they need to educate themselves with on the front end, it's just, hey, here are our rules for compliance, please comply.
And since many of the performers come in and apply for a amplified sound permit, that's an opportunity for us to do some outreach. For example, also with peddlers and peddler licenses, we had a trifle brochure that we provide to people, and the information about the regulations quickly got out into the public.
Any other comments? Do you have a motion on the item?
Just introduction of the.
Oh, I'm sorry, introduction, who'd like to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Thank you. And next item?
Next item would be, next item would be oral communication, five minutes. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, thank you. Mike McDivitt, followed by Mike Molehill.
I picked the wrong night to come.
This is early, are you kidding? No, this is a good night.
I forgot what I was gonna talk about because I've heard everything else. My name is Mike McDivitt. I'm here on behalf of my neighbors in a small block in Upper Glendale Annex Area, 3300 Block of Henrietta. And I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. On the small block, it's exactly from Maryland to New York, exactly 0.2 miles. And the problem we're having there is the speeding. And we have 12 houses on that block and 13 kids, small kids, from one to 10 years old. I've been in contact with the engineering department. They did a study with the speed, speed gun, or the speed counter and the vehicle counter. Out of 435 days, or cars that passed that, 85 of them were going over the speed limit. So the reason we have so many speeders is, from Pennsylvania, if you get off the 210 freeway or going, coming up from Foothill, and if you follow the red lines, we're the last street before the mountainside that can take you from Maryland and/or Pennsylvania over to New York and up Markridge and over. If, it's real easy, if they, if people would travel Santa Carlotta, there's the same amount of stop signs there, it's a wider street. But they're not, they're using our street. And we have kids that play out in the neighborhood, in the front yard, there's, there's folks there that won't even let their kids in the front yard. So I received an email from Mr. Galonian that stated that they can do a new speed count. The problem is, we're not gonna get the, the counts are not gonna be the 1,000 cars per day that the city has put into a policy. For 435 cars, 360, 370 of them, which is the 85%, are speeding. And we're trying to watch out, along with that, we're trying to watch out for the, for the safety of the kids. I've been there 20 years on that same block. The 12 neighbors, three of them have been there less than five years, everyone else has been there at least 10 years. So we're very close-knit family up there. We have a, we have a party, we have 50, 60 people, just in the neighborhood. So even if we did another speed count, it's, it's not gonna make the 1,000 cars per day. Along with that, there's a school two short blocks away from us on Maryland. People walk their dogs up and down on that street, they walk just for exercise, there's parents that take their, their kids to school and pick them up and come back. I have made that sign right there and put it in the middle of the street. Excuse me. And all the speeders think it's a joke and try to hit it. They'll pull up next to it and throw it down. It's not working, and it's getting worse. Like I said, I, I've been there for 20 years, and it's getting worse. And this is the 20th year I played Santa Claus. I dress up as Santa Claus for all the kids in the neighborhood. When we first started out, there was three, four, five of them. They've all grown up, they've all got married, graduated college. This is the first time out of 20 years that we've had 13 kids in that neighborhood. So we're trying to protect them. And like I said, I'm on here, I'm here on behalf of the neighbors, we're all friends. If you want them to come with me, they'll all come. So what I'm asking basically is an exception to that policy for the safety of the, the people and the, and the neighborhood and the kids. And that's basically why I'm here presenting the case. There is one other street that's right around the corner from us, 3200 Block of Los Olivos. I don't understand exactly why they have speed bumps. I never see anyone driving on that street, but they have speed bumps. So that, that's why I'm here. I'd, I'd like to see if we can hopefully get an exception. I've been in contact with PED also on this matter, and they said there's nothing we can do unless we know exactly what time they come by. They come by all, all the time. It's worse in the morning and in the evening when people go to work, come home. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully we can do something with this.
Thank you, Mr. McDivitt. Well, Chief Castor's in the back, and I think he's probably taking notes in his computerized mind on what you've just said, and I know Mr. Galonian is gonna look into Los Olivos, was it?
Well, Los Olivos is one that has speed bumps.
The bumps, and I noticed he wrote that.
But every time I go down Pennsylvania, I, I see one car, and they, and it doesn't look like they speed. Of course, they have speed bumps, but we need speed bumps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Galonian, what's the policy consideration behind limiting these speed bumps? Is there, I mean, are we trying to make sure the traffic flow isn't impeded? Otherwise, if it provides more safety, why are we reluctant to put up more speed bumps in these residential neighborhoods?
Madam Mayor, Member City Council, Councilmember Senanian. So the city council several years ago adopted a traffic calming guidelines for staff and for traffic and transportation commission to follow, that stated, in order to qualify for speed bumps on a given stretch of, section of a street, there needs to be 1,000 vehicles per day traveling on that street, which by the way, it's more conservative than some other cities that are more liberal than that.
Meaning, when you say that, meaning there are more, the, the number that they require is higher or lower?
Higher, higher, yes.
Okay.
And 85% of the motorists surpassed the posted speed limit sign. So that said, we need really to have a set of standards to, to follow, right? So those are the criteria that we use.
So the standards and criteria were adopted based on something, I'm assuming on staff recommendation? So staff recommended those numbers based on something? So what, what is that something?
Councilmember Senanian, it goes, it's before my time, but I believe there was research done, like I mentioned, from other cities, and with deliberation amongst council members that they felt at the time 1,000 vehicles per day seems reasonable. We have many streets within the city where the number of vehicles traveled is less than 1,000. So that, that, I assume, and that was based on a, a good average for qualified, to qualify for speed bumps. Otherwise, we'll have speed bumps on, on many of our streets, and we also keep in mind the emergency routes that our emergency vehicles use.
Sure, but this street is not an emergency route, right? This is not Western Avenue.
This is not, Mr. Senanian, an emergency route.
Do you, when was this com, traffic calming standard set? When did that come from the council?
I believe in 2009.
2009? I'd like to revisit this issue. I'd like to, I don't know if I can, I need support from my council, yeah. Look at these numbers once, once again, because this issue keeps recurring. This issue and stop sign issue keeps recurring. It's always a reasonable request by basically neighborhoods, neighborhoods, people concerned for their kids and for their safety. So it's not like people are asking for something selfish or anything like that. So why don't we, can we put this on the agenda and revisit this issue?
Yeah. Second, I'll second that, yes. Yeah. Because I, you know, signs, I know, don't work. You know, we, I think we're all finding that out.
I bought radar gun.
I know, I saw your pictures.
I have over 200 pictures of it.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll bring that back, and I think that's a good idea. It's time, because driving habits have certainly changed in our city. Thank you, Mr. McDivitt. Mike Molehill?
Yes. Question. My name is Mike Molehill. Councilman Najarian, with almost 12 years on council and having approved every pay raise for our CalPERS union workforce, last week stated, "We cannot get out of CalPERS." Obviously, a politician like our Najarian receives thousands of dollars in campaign money from the unions will support their outrageous salaries and lifetime retirement pension benefits. In the past 16 years, the cost of our police and fire departments, including their retirement pension benefits, has gone from 33% of the general fund to about 80% today. As reported in the Glendale News Press, December 18, 2012, Bob Elliott, City of Glendale Director of Finance, stated, quote, "At some point, we'll have more retirees than active." Glendale Fire Department currently has 161 firefighters and a staggering 222 retirees. Glendale Police Department currently has 233 sworn police officers and a staggering 292 retired officers. Today taxpayers are paying for more retired employees than current employees. What is criminal is Mr. Najarian. You allow former city employees' annual retirement pension to be only 10% less than their salaries before they decided to retire. Safety officers are retiring with 90% of their last year's salary as their annual retirement pension for life. Who in private industry receives this outrageous retirement benefit? It appears your union supporters are living better than the folks who are living on Social Security. Your approval of a two-tier retirement pay age, excuse me, from 50 to 55 for new hires was a Band-Aid fix. City employees contributing more towards their retirement pension is another Band-Aid fix. As long as you and your council colleagues continue approving safety personnel receiving 90% of the last year's salary as their retirement pension for life, and many employees living 25 to 35 years beyond retirement age, the present system will implode. Last month, I attended a seminar in which Dr. Radrick Kiwick of Caltech was the guest speaker. In the audience was the People's Attorney Professor Harry Zavos, also Mayor Paula Devine. Dr. Kiwick stated, "Getting out of CalPERS would, would cost us more upfront, but in the long run, it would be cheaper for the stakeholders." We should nullify the contracts with CalPERS, just like the city of Yorba Linda. We should have a defined contribution plan for our city employees, where the taxpayers are not on the hook guaranteeing CalPERS 7.5% annual rate of return on their failed investments. Only cities that belong to CalPERS have filed for bankruptcy protection, and Councilman Najarian wants to have the best, best, best employees that money can buy. San Bernardino, Santa Ana, Stockton, San Jose, Vallejo, and Mammoth City, excuse me, Mammoth Lakes. The cities of El Monte and Richmond are the latest cities on the verge of filing for bankruptcy. About half the cities in Los Angeles County, like the wealthy and low-crime cities of La Cuenca, Flint Ridge, Calabasas, and Malibu, utilize county services which are about 25% less expensive than comparable CalPERS services. Over the past five years, Glendale taxpayers have been, have continued going without needed city services and sending CalPERS about $22 million annually. On November 15, 2016, City Manager Ochoa stated, "In five years, our annual CalPERS obligation would more than double to a whopping $49 million annually." Mr. Najarian acted surprised as usual and stated, "City Manager Ochoa's financial report November 16 was mind-boggling." Was Councilman Najarian thinking about a retirement pension bond for the taxpayers to pay in order to stay with the corrupt CalPERS employee retirement system? Councilman Najarian, since you do not like my solutions, our, of our pension crisis, what are your solutions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molehill.
Madam Mayor, let's set a few things straight, correct the alternative facts that Mr. Molehill is spouting. First of all, I have not voted for every pay raise that has come before us. Mr. Molehill did a little research, he would see that. Secondly, getting out of CalPERS isn't like changing your shoes, it's a huge liability to do so. He is right. He is right when he quotes me as saying, I want the very best police and fire that this city can afford, that this city can buy, and I stand by that. And when he calls me a criminal, Mr. Mulhill, I challenge you. Let's give our fingerprints to the chief and let him run a criminal record on both of us, and I will here at this dais, permit that to be published throughout the world. Will you accept that challenge? Sure. I guess not. So it's easy to throw the name criminal around. I can tell you that we have the toughest retirement plan. Of all the cities in the state of California, there is no other city that has a retirement plan as restrictive as we do. And I can assure you, Mr. Mulhill, that there is more union money spent against me in my campaigns, far more than is supporting me. And that's very easy to find out also, by the FPPC filings. So please, Mr. Mulhill, don't throw rocks. We can't get out of CalPERS, regardless of what the professor from Caltech says. You've heard it from our city manager, you've heard it from our finance director, it's nothing that can be done. We can't nullify CalPERS. Now, I'm ready to work with you on different solutions, but we can't get out of CalPERS. And any sort of agreement that we have with our bargaining units has to be a bilateral agreement. It has to be a two-party agreement. We cannot force our employees to get out of CalPERS. It's not an easy situation. It's something that every city in the state of California is struggling with, and we are no different. We do the best we can, we try and provide services to the residents of our city, and we try to pass a balanced budget every year. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And I, I want to add to that, that I, yes, I was at that lecture, and the only solution that the professor had was change in legislation. It has to come from the state. There's nothing that we can do, we have to wait, we have to get the legislation behind us to change the retirement system. And that was his bottom line. And I spoke to him after his lecture, just to make sure that that was what he had said. So, next, Joseph Isagalian.
I want to talk about the parking issue. You know, November 10, I had a flat tire on Street Cypress in Glendale. I parked my car over there to go get, you know, the mechanic to, you know, change my tire. After changing my tire, I left, and then three, four weeks later, I received and noticed that, you know, I drove up, I drove away from, you know, the parking officer without stopping, you know, like he didn't, he couldn't put the ticket on my car. But I never seen a parking officer, and I never received a ticket. Now, then I tried to go take care of this matter at the Glendale parking place. They said that they don't take money anymore over there, you have to send it to Inglewood, California, which the address is over here. I tried to contact them, there's no such a thing in Inglewood, California, it's in Wisconsin, somewhere in Wisconsin, you know, it has nothing to do. And they don't take cash, they don't take anything, you have to pay with a credit card. And now the $52 ticket right now is $112. They say if I don't pay by February 14, it's going to be $154. And my thing is, I never saw the police officer over there to give a ticket, I never drove up, I never received a ticket. And the car is leased, and they said that, they sent a paper, I got the, you know, the dispute papers, I sent them back to them, you know, like within two weeks, they say, oh, no, you didn't make it on time. And I went back over there a couple of days ago to try to talk to their officer, I mean, whoever's in charge, they say, oh, he's on vacation. Whenever he come back, he's going to call me, never received that call. His name is Hartunian, S.O. Hartunian, and the person I spoke to, Myrna, says if I don't pay that ticket by 14th of this month, you know, they're gonna either tow the car or something like that, but, you know. And they said that 21 day, my thing is, you know, when they give that 21 day, the time, they count Saturdays and Sundays as a, you know, 21 day, whatever, whichever, they're not open over there. If I don't have a credit card, if I don't have a checking, how I'm going to pay that, you know, if they don't accept cash? My question is.
Thank you. We have a couple of.
And I also have a, you know, dash cam, I'm willing to provide that, the, I'm in process of getting that, the film out of the dash cam, and I'm going to bring it to you, prove it that I never received a ticket, and I never was, you know, I mean, I never drove up.
Thank you. We have Chief Castro back there, and Deputy Chief Carl Provolitis, you might want to talk to them, get some answers. Okay. Thank you. Rondi Warner, followed by Mike Van Gorder.
Hello, Mayor Devine, City Council and staff. My name is Rondi Warner, I'm a longtime resident of Glendale and a longtime community advocate, and I'm also a former Glendale College student. And I wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that enrollment has opened for the spring 2017 semester, which begins in two weeks on February 21st. At GCC, students can earn transferable college units, earn an AA degree, get a head start on college while they're still in high school, receive workforce training to help you on your career path, or if you're a veteran, you can use your benefits to attend classes there, or adult learners can explore new interests. There is no better time to enroll at GCC. Enrollment has dropped at community colleges throughout the state, so the courses that you might not have been able to get before might be available now. And enrolling has never been easier. You can go to www.glendale.edu and complete the process online. It's much easier than back in the day when you had to wait in line. Tuition is much more affordable than four-year colleges, and some of the continuing ed courses are tuition free. There are state and federal programs that can also help low-income students with their enrollment fees. I recently toured the Garfield campus over in trustee Area 4, and it is a really wonderful facility. I was so inspired that I enrolled in a class there myself and took a course on public speaking. So I hope it comes in handy in the future. If transportation is an issue, you can also enroll in distance education. Also, Glendale College recently received reaffirmation of their accreditation at the highest level. We are so fortunate to have Glendale Community College as a resource with its top-notch faculty, administration, and staff. Whatever your education goals might be, they can help you at GCC. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mike Van Gorder?
Yes, hello. You got it right the first time. It's awesome. Good evening, City Council. I just wanted to point out that I, Mayor, you said something particularly lovely tonight that I very much identify with, one of your two goals being the preservation of our neighborhoods. I think crucial to that must be the establishment of rent stabilization ordinance. I know it was supposed to be on the docket last time, supposed to be on the docket tonight. The ADU thing tended to, or, you know, kick the can down a bit because it was a very pressing priority. But I mean, I just had a conversation with somebody just a few days ago who lives over at Central and Doran. When she moved here to Glendale, she was paying, I think, $1,100 for a one-bedroom apartment, and she's now paying a little over $1,600 in between four or five years. Unless we cap this now, unless we address this issue now, you're going to start losing a lot of people from the city that are just going to have to move somewhere else just because they can no longer afford it here. It's like, a lot of us are at our spending limits, or, you know, reasonable spending limits, because they keep increasing rent, or many places are increasing rent past what cost of living increases if people actually get those at their work are able to cover. So I ask you guys to please, again, consider rent stabilization ordinances as soon as you possibly can. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And that concludes the oral communications segment. Next item?
New business?
New business, Councilmember Nigerian.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute a settlement agreement and WSPP confirmation agreement with Abound Grid Renewables LLC, settlement of a contractual dispute relating to energy deliveries under a renewable energy power purchase agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Garbetti?
Yes.
Nigerian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes.
I have new business as well.
Oh, you have a new business? Okay. No, 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 no.
Oh, three of us, okay.
Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
You are adjourned.
So moved.
Second?
Second, second.